Shows that I moved it, man seconded it, and we all voted yes. So. Okay, so we're still under, that was a resolution that kind of fell under new business. We have any other new business to discuss? There's nothing on the list. I have a few things that nobody else does. You guys will talk about something. Okay, so received a request, request to purchase some vacant land in Montgomery County. The guy gave us a purchase agreement. It's on Huffman Road, just west of Lutheran Church. It is a vacant piece of property. It's a picture of Jim. You have a copy of this, but there's a picture of it. It's that lot there. This guy here is the guy wanting to buy it. He's at Nice Place next door. So I would think that, you know, the nice house next door, he's wanting, it's a wooded vacant lot. He's wanting to buy it. We pay $703.28 a year in tax. No house. They appraise it at, they had two figures. Thirty-five percent appraisal is eighty-five hundred. The one-hundred percent is twenty-four, two ninety. So twenty-four thousand. He's offering to purchase it for fifteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. They also, we, the buyer, will pay all full, full cost of completing the transaction. Pay any outstanding property taxes within reason. Remains open till the fifteenth of next month. So thirty days. You guys want to drive by and take a look at it? Want to make mine up?
I'd like to see copies of what you have. I'm not voting on it tonight.
Okay. We do that. Okay, so other new business. We have a guy that's wanting to sell us a piece of property. M V A H. You've heard them before, right, Jim? It's an investment group. They own a lot on Taft Avenue. Taft Avenue is the next road east over here. Our organization owns a vacant piece of land, lot fifty-six, Taft Avenue, which abuts two parcels you own in the area. We have interest in managing. We have interest in and manage several single-family home developments in the area. We no longer believe this lot will be useful for our purposes and therefore are willing to dispose of it. I'm not sure about this one. They paid, the, the property records show that they, forty-eight thousand on it December eighth, December of two thousand and eighteen. For some reason, they bought it for forty-eight thousand. They don't say what they want for, how much they want to sell it for. I'll, I'll make a copy of this, Jim, and send it to you. Do you want to email it to? Make mind it next month, next meeting? I'll look into that. So we talked about Kansas Center being open. Okay, that's all I have from new business. Were you having any new business you want to discuss?
Uh, no.
Jim?
I've got on the agenda a resolution approving the hiring of four seasonal road workers.
Next, next. So, well, actually, it's not next. Number four is fiscal officer report. So next, Tracy, you're on the, you're on the floor. You have a fiscal officer's report, please.
Okay, and you put those three reports that I provided to you in your map. Of course, they're only as current as the day we were doing on last Thursday. I've done a lot of bills about time this week ago. These fifty-six bills are having been stacked as Steve gave me today to Adrian. Sixty. They will be done hopefully by the end of the week in, in the mailbox.
You got what? Fifty invoices today?
Sixty, sixty, six zero today. I got them today in the, in the email. I got the hard copies in my mailbox. In fact, I was up there this morning, she was making copies of them. And I don't give them to him like this. In fact, some of my data back two months ago. We had a meeting on July second to discuss the bills that were outstanding. And we didn't discuss fifty-six invoices on July second. But now I got fifty-six sitting here. So that right there tells you that he's getting invoices that I have never seen. I have all the records of when they come through me. And that's why I asked at the last meeting that you guys have a process for us to go. And he, Steve told us he would talk to Adrian. You guys agreed for him to talk to Adrian. And he said he would do better. And he would write an email that shows tells what the process is. I have not seen that email, so I don't know what the process is. I'm still looking for that email. But she stamped, what I'm getting right now, she's stamping. She's not opening them. She's stamping them though. And then she's giving out, obviously, she's giving out stuff to you. That's in your, in your mailbox. And I guess she's giving out to whoever's got the name on it. And if it looks like a bill, then I get it. If it's got Steve's name on it, he gives it. Anything that has her name on it, she gives, opens it and gives it to me. And then everything else that looks like a bill, like the D P N L, I mean, those are obvious, but I get those. But there could be other ones that I'm not getting. And I'm thinking because I have fifty-six sitting here and we didn't go with fifty-six on July second, that if there's bills, and again, I just got them this morning. There's very few in there that I have not seen yet. Envoices in there that I have not seen yet. So now I have to spend the rest of the week trying to catch up on these bills. And I try to give them out every day that I give them. I try to give three to five. At the most, five or seven, five or seven. But I'm not giving that many out of the day. Some of them this morning too. The fire department has no issues. They give them to me, look at them, give them back. They have, he has all the data. He has access to U A N. He uses U A N as far as I understand. He can get the reports if he feels, I mean, it was always a complaint to you guys that he has no access to the updated reports. And now he has that access. So I don't, I don't understand. I mean, that's probably not how it's gotten me done. But I always assumption because Steve is not here, I can't answer those questions. This is just from my perspective. I just don't, I'm, I'm really highly upset for me to get fifty-six, sixty, how many are, are sitting here? That's just one folder of fifty-six. There's also another folder almost equally as thick. So I don't know how many is in that. But that's just, how, how do you guys expect me to get those out in time? And the ones that are already late, there's no way I'm going to get those out in time. Especially if some of them are two to three months. But I know that there, some of them are that far because the ones we discussed on July second were already late. So I know there's some now. I don't know how many more are, and I won't know till this week, almost before this week is over. So I'll just plan as I can and they'll be in the mailbox by the end of this week. Where you guys have to sign. There's, there's actually three. I don't know if you signed them, Mike, when you went up there, but there's actually.
Yeah, there's only two in there, I saw.
Two, two bills in the purchase folder right there.
Yeah, I'll sign it.
Yeah, so when you want more students, you get that out. But there'll be more by the end of this week. I'm not going to guarantee there'll be all of them, but there'll be more by the end of this week. So I have an issue with this and I don't know how we can fix this issue. I can't, I mean, I can only assume that there's something that's keeping us from doing the bills. And what it is, I, I, I'm asking the trustees to help me out on this, to get these bills on time. Because this, the day of the meeting and you hand me a stack of bills and expect me to have them done. And the first thing I can imagine him saying is, I did all the bills that have been turned in. That doesn't mean that they've been paid. They're sitting right here, but they're not been paid. Because I couldn't do them if I just got them. In fact, I know what time I got them. I was up there, I left at eleven o'clock. I came back and they were just put in my mailbox at two. For some reason, my mind said, come back and go get those because you're going to have to do them. And then when my mailbox hit the two o'clock when I picked them up. Because when I left, Adrian was making copies to send us, me and Mr. Mann. And Steve put on there the note that he get a copy, Mr. Mann and I get a copy and I get the hard copy. So we all have emails of these bills as well. So I can, if you want, send them to you two guys, since you don't have copies, if that's what you'd like to see. But they just, the email, I can send those email forward and write to you and you'll see that they were just sent to them.
Please do.
Okay, I will do that. Do you want to do that?
Sure.
Okay. But it's just frustrating. I need help from you guys to figure out how we can solve this problem. We can't, you know, we can't continue to do parent bills like this. And these are majority. He also is the one who is the focal point for the shared invoices. So even if the fire department pays their portion, I can't pay it all. I can't pay it all until he gives me his, his share of it. So those bills are going to end up late. And not, not because of fire department, because of Steve holding those bills. I mean, if he needs help, I asked him to do at least, I said, six weeks. Maybe we have to do it once a month. And we have been doing that. Like I said, we did have a meeting on July second, but the, the meeting before that, I think, was back in March. So maybe we need to have a meeting more often. But, you know, what's the point of me mailing all the bills, the bump, uh? Just give you an example. It was really frustrating. We set up the meeting on July second at nine o'clock. I walk in, ten minutes to nine. And I sit in there waiting. And I said, Steve, are we supposed to meet in your office? He said, well, my printer doesn't have, this was our just vacation. My printer ran out of ink. I'm having Adrian print the bills out for me that you sent. Eleven-thirty, he walks into my office, eleven-thirty. He says, are you ready for the meeting? The meeting was supposed to be at nine o'clock. Then, when he walks into the office, he says, can you make copies of all the bills so we can discuss them? I thought from nine to eleven-thirty, that's what he was writing on. If he had have told me down in the beginning, I could have made them. We could have been on and done the meeting. You know, so I don't, you know, that's, that was, that's a big frustration to me. You know, stuff like that is happening. It's not just a one-time thing. This has been repeated.
Talking about last week.
And so what do we do? I'm still sitting here. Is there something you guys can, somebody can say? I'll talk to him. We'll get this straightened out because this can't continue going on. I mean, I was hoping he would be here, so. I talked to him in the meeting on the second. I said, Steve, we can't keep doing this. You gotta work, you gotta work some way to get these bills to me. If you need some help or you, you can't do it, let me know what it is so we can get this done. Because the trustees are looking at me and say, why isn't this bill done? I'm getting calls from company. And I said, this is the last meeting. And they're saying, why aren't these bills paid? And I don't even have the bill. I have to go search it down. You know, what, what do we do about this?
Can I think of an answer? Is there a way to get Steve to do his job?
Let's put it on schedule for the work session.
On the, the eighth?
Yeah, we'll come over to your answer.
Okay.
In the meantime, we'll, we'll hold more bills until then because I'll have the next step. But we have to stop this, this continuation of doing this because it's been going like this all year.
I agree. Okay, so Tracy, we'll, we'll discuss it in our next work session. I know we can't make any decisions there. Maybe come up with some kind of an agreement. And hopefully Steve will be here and we'll have a nice discussion on it. And try to come up with some type of solution. So you get the bills on time. Couple of days after they come in, the latest, latest. And we just pay our bills on time. So I'd like to make a motion. We accept the fiscal officer's report. Pay the bills, invoices, appropriations, and warrants.
I'll second the motion.
So a motion on the floor to accept the fiscal officer's report. We have a roll call, please, Tracy.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
No on the report. Yes on paying the bills.
Okay, trustee Mann?
Yes.
Okay, so next is resolutions. We have two on, on the table here. First one, we already did. The second one is a resolution.
Mr. Hart?
Yes?
Let me, let me go first.
Yeah, please.
I have a resolution here from the Jefferson Township Order Trustees Incorporated with the Fire Chief Agreement to hire Waterways Southwest Pennsylvania, L L C to complete annual fire hose testing of fourteen hundred and sixty foot at a cost of twenty-three cent per foot not to exceed three thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Are you making a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Yeah, was number on the floor, on the floor for that?
Well, oh, five eight. I think oh, five eight.
So we have a motion on the floor to adopt resolution two O dash oh five eight. Testing of the fire hoses. Any questions? Number, vote please, Tracy.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. So I'll make this next one five nine, Tracy?
Five seven.
Five seven?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have another resolution on the floor. Resolution number two O dash oh five seven. The Jefferson Township Order Trustees approved the hiring of four seasonal road workers to the cemetery, parks, and road department for the Jefferson Township Road Department.
Move to adopt resolution twenty dash zero five seven. Or is it five eight?
Five seven.
Five seven.
I'm clear.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion on the floor to, to adopt resolution two O dash oh five seven. Any questions? Yes, I do. Just out of curiosity, Jason Henry, is that a, related to a guy that's already working for us? Do you guys know?
I don't, I don't have none.
I mean, nepotism, it's, it's close. It's not an exact, because this guy just means that he, because if he's related to the other Henry, who's full-time. In the employee handbook, employment of relative, employment of relatives to regular full-time positions in the same department is prohibited. This policy shall be retroactive applied. A relative is defined as a mother, father, brother, sister, son, daughter-in-law, or any person related by blood or marriage residing in the same household. So, I don't know, this guy's, just makes, I guess all it would mean is Jason Henry, if he's related, could not be full-time because the other Henry's full-time. So I just had a question. Nobody knows the answer to whether those two are related?
Oh, interesting, pleasant question. Do you guys think you get any information, details on who these people are?
No, I'm not.
If, if that is the case, Mike, if they're related, then we'll have to board his application. So.
Well, we scratch them from this resolution and we can verify the situation and then we can do a resolution to hire him next time if everything checks out.
Because your previous request was up to four. So you want me to just X out number four in here?
Then we'll initial it.
But just, just another addition. You don't even know anything about these other guys either.
So you, you, and, and the resolution that we did on, I mean, it's, it's just more questions. So hiring of four seasonal road workers to the cemeteries, parks, road department of the Jefferson Township Road Department. Then whereas in the interest of Jefferson Town, in the interest of the township and its residents, that the staffing level of Jefferson Township Road Department is upgraded to provide better response to mowing, nuisances, building and facilities repair, and cemetery and park maintenance. Building and facilities repair. When, because you talk about how you got to have certified people who do work and you're going to have seasonal people who repair and things in the facilities and the buildings. The resolution needs to be a little more descriptive than actually what they're doing. A little wide open there.
So are we all workers that are in repair?
Uh-huh.
I'm, I'm all workers in building repair as well.
Yeah, I don't.
I mean, that's part of the road department, that's part of what a road department is probably good. Building repair. That's just, I don't know if you can answer it. I'm just saying, is that in the description of the road department, the building, facility repair?
Well, the motion's on the floor, so.
So President, I called my question on this issue.
You called for a question too?
I called for a vote.
Oh, that's what I was going to. I said, the guy that gets on the thing, I've got all my questions, I've got my questions out there. Tracy, we have a vote, please?
Trustee McLaughlin?
No.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution passes.
Okay, that's our initial on number four. Sign, sign the resolution. Thank you.
Okay, so next on the list is the departmental reports. Sheriff's Department, please. You here for a report?
I didn't get any information from my captain.
Okay. I appreciate your attendance.
Oh, no problem at all.
Okay, zoning department, Jim McGuire?
Mr. Calligan didn't give me a report for tonight's meeting.
Uh, this is nicely, squeak-sweet. Fire department, Mr. Gene Lex, please.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Fire department, we continue to provide the safety updates on the COVID. Our personnel, we didn't have one today because the governor was interrupted by the sixty-one million dollar scandal at the Ohio State Senate House today. So he wasn't able to do that. That's the outstop. Uh, worked on paying our bills, attended the local county fire chief's meetings and R D C meetings about the COVID. And also, tell you Zoom, if you, if you want to use Zoom, it's a way to work. It works very well. Completely responded to emails. Continue to report the changes of the COVID on Facebook to keep our citizens up to date. Last, two weeks ago, the city of Dayton, the fire chief put out that you can go to any fire station in the city of Dayton to collect free masks. We were inundated with quite a few people. We weren't prepared for that. I called them. Well, the chiefs called them and kind of raised a little ruckus with them. Got hold of E M A. They give me two public health. I was able to get us, secured us four thousand masks out here to hand out to our residents. We gave them out two. They were giving out five, I think it was, five or ten. We're just giving out two and it doesn't matter if you're a resident Jefferson or city, wherever, we're just giving you the two masks. We were able to give them through the public health. We had a demo today of a fire engine, pumper tanker. Went very well. Trying to figure out, send out the pictures. Apparently the camera I used today, too big of a megapixel, and I came and sent more than three pictures. So I gotta figure a different way to get the pictures out to everybody. See here, as you're aware, the new chief's vehicle was in a collision. An EMS call had traveled. We're waiting, we're working through the process with the insurance company. It's a possibility it may be totaled. Two hires started with their orientation. We've had some record requests of past fires. Two oh four Calumet, that was back in two thousand and fifteen. That fire lady apparently bought the house. She got it on the sheriff's sale just for the taxes. And so she needed the fire report to help take that tax away. Breathing air is going to pick up the old compressor and purchase the old S C B A fill bottles. Had to get some information for Mr. Wolf on the Comdoc printer that was sent to him. Station maintenance, we haven't had to cut the grass in the last couple of days because of the heat. So that's nice with the sun being out there, the grass is not growing. We worked on the day room. Station sixty here, we've got the chair rails up. We have a little bit of painting to do. I'm going to have to evaluate the floor in there. Mr. Mann, I think maybe I could mean, if you got it, then I'd like to kind of show you some of the floor or, you know, somewhere along the line because the floor is going to have to have something done to it.
Okay.
We replaced the filters here and all the H V A systems. We got a pretty good deal on Fire Five filter, filter buy. Uh, continuing Q A on our run reports. Price some stuff for Tracy for the CARES Act. We're working on this, but trying to find a vendor to come into all the buildings, using the CARE Act to have all the buildings disaffected for us. We're in the process of doing our protocol testing. That was been put off since the beginning of the year because of the COVID. The crews have been doing hose advancement mades. We sent two people. We got donated two spots to a class down in Cincinnati. It's called Stretching for Success. It's all about stretching hand lines and large diameter hose and how to handle, you know, using the large diameter hose on fire scenes. Replaced some uniforms. It's that time of year, sure, replacing some uniforms. We ordered some nameplates for the back of the fire gear for some new people. I T, we're still working with Strattform to produce our bill on the internet side of the, of both stations. We put in two smoke detectors. I received a review plans today on a place called Legacy Bar. It's on Third Street. I've got a meeting with the home, with the owner of this business. It's redoing the inside of this building on tomorrow afternoon. I wanted to see the building because it used to be, it's, it's, we need to get inside to see what it's like, like inside before I can move forward with the plans. Uh, H R report, the two new hires, they said were here for their I T and H R stuff. And then they started training. We've had multiple public records on some older fires, as explained. But I had another one. We had one on auto buying, roofing content, and a few others that I've been helping the investigators with their reports, improving them before I send them out.
I think that's all I have. Thank you, Gene.
Do you have any tip?
I haven't got any yet. We're working on it. I will give you the report when you give me the money. Okay, so next is code enforcement. I don't see Tony McKee. And then we have the two Wolf's reports and he's not here. So next is comments by citizens. Maxie Jones?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Do you have the floor, please?
Yes, where is our administrative department?
Yes. Where is our administrator today? He on vacation or?
He's tied up in a meeting.
Okay, you know, um, put my glasses on, come on, let me see. Um, you know, he, he, he wants an increase in pay that other, uh, administrators make a little bit more money than he does. And he wants a little bit more money, somewhere between fifteen to seventeen thousand more a year. He didn't get his work done, as we're seeing, and the question I have, where is he? Just hold on, I'll let you answer it. And, uh, is HR rules top secret? Can we get copies of them?
The public record, that's it.
Okay, where can we get them from?
You gotta fill out public record, question provider.
I'll do that. And also, we hired, I can maybe cut you off. Also, because I wanna get before my time, I will. Also, we hired some more employees. And we have some employees that I've noticed up to the county center kind of just chilling out down there. And, uh, and I, like Mr. McGuire said early, not our condition. Well, in our condition, how can we afford this? And nepotism, we already touched on that, so, you know. And why does Mr. Wolf, since he's the, the highest paid employee that we have, why does he need help if he's in a, a meeting someplace? Does, is it our meeting or somebody else's meeting? It can't be our meeting, because he's not here. He's late all the time. Not all the time. He's late a bunch of times. And then he's not preparing when he's at the meeting. I mean, I know he has a lot to do, but, you know. He's only human, so are we. We live in, he doesn't. Thank you.
So you got Maxie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Robert Moore?
Moon.
Moon?
I'm sorry.
I, I see it's an animal. I'm sorry. I couldn't read your body.
Well-
Please, go ahead. That's four.
I come first to, um, lifelong resident of the township, uh, graduate of the schools, community involvement. Ran the Little League. Got here for over twenty years. I haven't done it in the last ten years, because I took on a new job, but I traveled. But now I'm, I'm back, so I may wanna get it restarted. On paper, I believe I'm still the vice president of the Jefferson Optimists. It's not in function right now, but I was held that last position. So my question is, when the county came here searching for the fairgrounds, did we even consider a trade-off? They took our park away from us, and we have nothing left. They kept the tennis courts, okay? It was eight baseball fields up there, about twelve basketball courts. We have a park-